From the, oh, not recused, but abstaining from the minutes, just so you know that. I really like when I get it, but it's, but it's, it's just as easy to go on the website.
So, Michael, how many do we need this evening to start the meeting? Because there's four of us.
I think, I think we're, I think we're good. We're good for quorum.
Yeah, quorum is usually half of the group rounded up.
Plus one.
There's five of you present, Chair Beasate, so I think you can get started.
Okay, so with that, good evening and welcome to the October nineteenth, twenty twenty-one Planning Commission meeting. For everyone attending virtually, thank you for joining us. Please note that we want to hear from you. If you're in the audience and you would like to address the commission during public comment for an item on the agenda, there's two options. For those of you using online Zoom, please use the raise your hand button at the bottom of the touchscreen. When it is your turn to speak, you will be unmuted and given three minutes to address the commission. If you're joining us by telephone, you may address the commission by pressing star nine. When it is your turn to speak, you will be unmuted and given three minutes to address the commission. Please note that you may only speak once per agenda item. And, Michael, would you give us a hand-taking roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Morgan, absent. Commissioner Madden, here. Commissioner Lethen.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Durazo is excused. Vice Chair Harmon.
Here.
And Chair Beasate.
Here.
All right. And Commissioner Johnson, would you be so kind as to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Gladly. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. With that, we'll move on to item one, which is the approval of the minutes. We have two sets of minutes. The first is September seventh, twenty twenty-one. Anyone care to make a motion? Commissioner Harmon.
Oh, I will move that we approve the minutes. I skimmed them. They seemed fine.
All right, thank you. We have a motion. Anyone with a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those, or, Michael, is this a roll call for this?
Uh, for minutes, um, sure, we can do a roll call. Commissioner Morgan, excused. Commissioner Madden. Yes. Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Lethen.
Aye.
Commissioner Durazo is excused. Vice Chair Harmon.
Aye.
And Chair Beasate.
Aye. So that brings us to September twenty-one, two thousand twenty-one. Do we have a motion for those minutes? Anyone?
Our motion, we approve the minutes.
Thank you, Commissioner Lethen. Do we have a second?
Second.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second for the September twenty-one minutes. Roll call vote again, please. Michael?
Hey. Commissioner Morgan, excused. Commissioner Madden. Uh, I'll abstain. I was not present. Okay. Uh, Commissioner Johnson?
I'll also abstain. I was not present.
Okay. Commissioner Lethen.
Aye.
Commissioner Durazo is excused. Vice Chair Harmon.
Aye.
And Chair Beasate.
All right. Thank you.
Very good.
All right, so we'll move on to item two, for public comments for items not on the agenda. If there's anyone watching from home that would like to address the commission for items that are not on the agenda, this is your opportunity to speak. Uh, do we have anyone in the audience with their hands raised or looking to speak to us? Michael, can you see anyone on your side?
Uh, no.
Okay. Then we'll, uh, move on to item three, conflicts of interest. Anyone have a conflict this evening? No, okay. Then we will move on to item four, public hearings. Twenty-two thirty Fleetwood, and this is, uh, staff is recommending, recommending we continue to November sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. Anyone have comments or continue?
I move that we continue to November sixteenth, twenty twenty-one.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. And when Michael's done with his call, he can help us with the roll call vote, please. Michael Smith, you're here with us. I see you up on the screen. Would you be so kind as to, uh, help us with a roll call vote, please?
Sure, well, I'm gonna, we're gonna pause right here for a moment. I, I think he might be checking on the last motion you guys made, just to make sure, so, um, we'll, we'll wait to hear from Michael right now.
That was Commissioner Morgan having trouble with the link, so. Okay, so I apologize. Where were we?
Uh, we were on item four A, and we were looking at staff recommendation to continue to November sixteenth.
Correct, yes.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Would you give us a hand with the roll call vote, please?
Uh, certainly. Commissioner Morgan, uh, coming, coming soon, hopefully. Commissioner Madden.
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lethen.
Aye.
Commissioner Durazo is excused. Vice Chair Harmon.
Aye.
And Chair Beasate.
Aye.
All right. So with that, we'll move on to item B, which is seventeen twenty-three Hickory. And this is also a staff recommendation to continue to November sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. Uh, anyone might want to make a comment or a motion?
Okay, a motion to continue it, if that's what they want.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Michael, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Morgan. Coming soon. Commissioner Madden.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lethen.
Aye.
Commissioner Durazo, excused. Commissioner, Vice Chair Harmon.
Aye.
And Chair Beasate.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, so that takes us to item five A, which is a study session regarding the recent housing law updates and the submitted SB thirty-five intensity bonus project overview.
Okay. See. Hopefully you can, uh, you're able to see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. Oh, good evening, commissioners. Uh, this item is, uh, similar to the, uh, uh, presentation that Pamela did to the city council last evening on the new state laws plus some existing state laws. And it's always good to, uh, even if you're familiar with some of the, uh, some of the housing laws, it's always good, uh, you know, to, to have refreshers as well. So we'll cover, tonight we'll cover some, uh, a couple of the new laws plus some of the existing laws. And I'll also be explaining, um, some of the, uh, some of the things, some of the types of inquiries that we're receiving and the types of projects that, uh, may be coming through, uh, that are utilizing some of these state laws. So, let's see. I can get, there we go. So as I mentioned, uh, well, uh, the objective is to provide an overview this evening. And then, uh, and an explanation of how these laws can restrict some of the ability of the city to regulate certain projects. So our agenda, the agenda tonight includes some background. Uh, we'll talk about SB nine, SB ten, accessory dwelling units, SB thirty-five, which is expedited processing, the Housing Accountability Act, SB three thirty, State Density Bonus Law, and finally concluding with, uh, any questions that you have. Uh, so, the, as, as you know, uh, the cities and municipalities, including San Bruno, uh, are able to regulate development and, and implement development standards through the general plan, through zoning, through voter approval. Also, uh, in San Bruno's case, uh, you have the Transit Corridors Plan, which is a plan for mixed-use development along San Bruno's corridors. And that, that document has very specific standards, uh, about, uh, development and development massing and so forth. And these laws, of course, strike a balance between new and existing development while, also basically maintaining the quality of life for the community. Uh, the new state laws, however, supersede some of these local regulations. Uh, they serve to streamline and expedite review processes. Uh, they limit the applicability of zoning, um, in some cases, and they waive certain development standards, uh, such as parking height setbacks and so forth. And again, the aim of the state laws is to increase, uh, production of housing. So, uh, with the, um, overview of the housing laws, we'll start with Senate Bill nine. And Senate Bill nine was, uh, just recently adopted into law. Uh, Governor Newsom signed this on, on September sixteenth, and it'll take effect on January first, twenty twenty-two. The, uh, legislation allows for single-family zone lots, uh, anywhere within a jurisdiction, uh, to have up to four units. Uh, this includes all the units types such as duplex, an accessory dwelling unit, a junior accessory dwelling unit, uh, as permitted by the existing ADU laws. Um, it will prohibit any discretionary review. That means, uh, any type of review by the ARC, the Planning Commission, or the, the city council. And review can only be through a building permit based on standards that the city has in place. So the, the one that's, I think, the most concerning is that this law would allow for the subdivision of residential property into two lots, each with a minimum of twelve hundred square feet. And, um, each, so you could build a duplex structure on each of the newly created lots. Uh, there is a provision in the law that states that if you are subdividing, you have to subdivide, uh, roughly proportionate to the size of the lot, based on a maximum forty, sixty percent split. So you can do fifty, fifty, forty, sixty, or anything in between, but you can't do, uh, take twenty percent of the lot area and then leave eighty percent. So, uh, so it's twelve hundred square feet, um, is the minimum, and then the, the roughly proportional, uh, split. This will preempt any city zoning standards and apply to most residential neighborhoods across the state. And so this, basically, the jurisdiction has to allow units of at least eight hundred square feet in size. Uh, for parking, um, it prohibits, uh, off-street parking requirements to no more than one parking space per unit. That's all that can be required. If the property is located within a half a mile of high-quality transit, in, in San Bruno's case, the Samtram's bus lines on El Camino Real, Caltrain, or Bart, or if a car-share vehicle is available within a block, no street, no street parking spaces would be required for the units. And it does, the law does encourage new dwelling units to be compatible with existing neighborhood-scale homes, meaning modifications to property need to be in keeping, uh, with the appearance of the neighborhood. Um, I, I hope that this, uh, this, these graphics are not, uh, meant to alarm you, and I think they may be, um, uh, you know, go a bit far. Uh, but the one on the left, you can see, uh, shows an existing single-family residential neighborhood. And then the, the, uh, diagram below shows, uh, potential development under SB nine. I think that the, the mass, the boxes and the massing that are showing is a bit aggressive and, uh, probably overdone, but it, it, it's, you know, I think it's, it's just designed to help convey, uh, what, you know, visually what might happen. Uh, the next image, um, the before and after SB nine. So there are potentially a number of ways individuals could subdivide their lots, either with, uh, you know, subdividing off the back of the lot with some sort of an easement or, uh, splitting the lot into, uh, directly from the street. You know, so those are some of the, some of the possible ways, uh, people might use this law. However, um, it's, it's worth noting that, uh, some research has been done by the Turner Center in Berkeley, looking at, you know, all of the lots within the state and also looking at larger cities, including San Bruno. And they, and basically, you know, they're looking at it from an economic standpoint, whether, uh, you know, the, the cost and value of adding a unit versus what it can be, you know, rented for, um, you know, whether that makes sense. And they see that, you know, for San Bruno, that would mean no more than five hundred, uh, these types of units during the, the life of the law. But our staff's feeling is that most homeowners who are interested in having an additional unit on the property would be, uh, looking more at the ADU or the junior ADU option rather than subdividing their property. Subdivision, uh, requires, you know, hiring an engineer and a lot of additional costs that most homeowners are probably not interested in pursuing. And then they have to go through a subdivision process with the city. In addition to that, uh, one of the, 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 one of the problems that we see with the law is that it creates, or can create, a number of building code conflicts. So, for example, uh, the building code for residential construction requires that you maintain a five-foot setback from any openings, uh, such, such as doors and windows along a building. And if you go closer than that, those openings have to be fire-rated, you know, or they have to be eliminated. So, um, and for residential homes, you need ingress and egress out of windows and around the perimeter of a structure. So, um, subdivision, I think, people will find, great, will create, that will create a lot of conflicts, uh, in these types of, of, uh, uh, structures. So time, time will tell how this will play out. But again, uh, you know, we feel that the, that most people are gonna go for ADUs and junior ADUs. Uh, Senate Bill ten is the, is also another bill that Governor Newsom signed into law and also takes effect January first, twenty twenty-two. This law is, is optional for cities. So it's not, it's, it's a tool for cities who wish to increase, uh, single-family residential, uh, zoning, uh, intensity, uh, close to transit. So what it does is it exempts, um, rezonings of single-family lots to small, multifamily housing structures of, of up to ten units, you know, within close proximity of transit. So the act, the act of rezoning would be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. So it just provides a tool for cities that want to do that. So there's no, there's no requirement that, that cities do this or, you know, or, and, you know, take on these types of rezonings unless they really want to. Uh, so this is kind of a, a, a summary slide. Again, not to, not to, not to concern, hopefully scare you too much. Um, it just tries to show how you, you know, you could have a, a number of, if, if you did, uh, an SB ten rezoning of a residential neighborhood close to transit, and then with the effects of SB nine, you know, the picture on the right shows what a kind of a mixture neighborhood uh, could look like, uh, you know, in that situation. Just, uh, this, the, uh, you know, the ADU laws, um, have been in effect for a number of years and, um, they were recently updated in twenty twenty, and then the city of San Bruno adopted the, the, essentially the state law for accessory dwelling units. And, um, so it, it allows for accessory dwelling units and, uh, junior accessory dwelling units, which are within a structure, to be built in, in a jurisdiction. So within San Bruno, uh, prior to the law change, uh, I think the city was averaging about ten to thirteen, uh, accessory dwelling units. In twenty twenty, the city experienced a spike in, um, ADU production. There were forty-three units, uh, created. And then in twenty twenty-one, and we're not even done with the year yet, it's an additional forty-three uh, applications that we've received. And again, those are ministerial, so they're, uh, processed by just a building permit. And, uh, you know, so those, uh, the planning, the, the Architecture Review Committee or the Planning Commission don't, don't end up seeing those, those applications. And just a reminder that the accessory dwelling units can be detached, attached, interior, or, uh, also be a conversion of a garage space or other existing space. So Senate Bill thirty-five is, um, the streamlined affordable housing law. Uh, it was enacted in twenty seventeen and became acted, uh, effective in, on January first of twenty eighteen. It allows eligible residential projects to be processed ministerially, uh, meaning without a review by decision-making bodies uh, in urbanized areas where cities did not, uh, produce enough housing to meet their regional housing needs assessment numbers, uh, in the current housing cycle. So for San, San Bruno, did, you know, did not meet its current, uh, arena, um, allocation by no fault of the cities, you know, again, the cities are only required to designate properties, uh, for housing development within the, the housing element cycle. And then it's up to the, you know, basically, uh, private developers and the development community to come forward to develop those sites. So, but, you know, be that what it is, um, you know, most, most jurisdictions in the state are in the same, uh, situation, uh, meaning that, uh, they have to basically accept these SB thirty-five-type projects. Um, so these projects can only be reviewed by what are called objective design standards. Those are any standards that the city has in place at the time the application is made. Um, in the case of San Bruno, the, the city is fortunate to have a, uh, Transit Corridor specific plan, which is the location of where many of these types of applications may be made. Time will tell how, how, how it plays out. But, uh, anyway, that's, uh, that's the basis of, uh, Senate Bill thirty-five. There are some timeframes within the law where jurisdictions have essentially sixty days to review the, the application for their, these objective design standards. And, um, and then, uh, another thirty days to, uh, basically review the application if it's under a hundred and fifty, uh, dwelling units. And, um, you know, so that, so there's some very tight timeframes here. And I, and also no parking, um, as mentioned, as shown in the slide, if it's, if the project's within a half mile of transit. So the, uh, Housing Accountability Act and Senate Bill, uh, three thirty were enacted into law in twenty seventeen and amended in twenty twenty-one. And, uh, it applies to any, uh, any developments of two or more units and, um, a number of other, uh, type of, types, types of residential developments. And, I'm sorry, I apologize here, my cursor's a little too, too, too easy to move here. So it, it, it affects the jurisdiction's ability to approve and, or disapprove development. And, uh, the only, uh, standard is whether, that can be applied is whether this, the jurisdiction can prove that the, uh, development will have an unavoidable impact on public health and safety. So, so as you can see, it is the kind of the five main points, uh, on the bottom of the slide. It limits the jurisdiction's, uh, ability to disprove projects, uh, prevents jurisdictions from increasing fees after an application is submitted. There, there, it limits the number of public hearings to five. You know, in the case of jurisdictions that have multiple subcommittees, uh, create, creates a permit streamlining process, uh, and also, uh, prevents cities and counties from creating building limits, such as a, a, you know, a moratorium on the number of units that could be, uh, could be built within a period. The State Density Bonus Law has, uh, is, has been, uh, been used, is starting to be used more and more by jurisdictions. And the way it works is that a developer can exceed the, the maximum density uh, within a, a local jurisdiction's plan. And they can do so, uh, they can get more units, uh, based on the, the level of, the number of affordable units and the, and the, the, um, the depth of the affordability. Uh, so, and it's based on a sliding scale. Uh, and there were recent amendments to the, to the density bonus law in twenty twenty that, uh, even provide, uh, greater, uh, uh, incentives for developers, that are more, uh, more units for developers up to, uh, eighty percent, an eighty percent density bonus for certain types of one hundred percent affordable, uh, projects, and, and including senior housing projects. So that's a significant difference from what, uh, local jurisdictions zoning um, and development standards would allow. So that's, uh, that's significant. Um, in the case, I, I think I'll make it, uh, just make a comment that's pertinent to San Bruno. So under our Transit Corridors Plan, um, we have a height limit of seventy feet uh, for the transit-oriented development zone along El Camino, for example, and San Bruno Avenue. And, uh, the, there, there is no, uh, density maximum if the lot's more than twenty thousand square feet. So what, uh, so the, so the developer may, may, may not approach the city if they are developing one of those, in one of those areas uh, to actually get more units. In some jurisdictions, they say there's a density limit on the number of units. But what they may do instead is just ask for, uh, what are called incentives and concessions uh, from various zoning standards. They may also ask for waivers. Uh, from various zoning standards. Um, they may also ask for waivers or reductions of development standards. Or a reduced parking ratio. However, parking, some types of parking um, standards are. Uh, like, for example, if you're uh, close to, to transit, cities are already limited to how many parking spaces they can require. Uh, in those situations and um. You know, again, it's, it's, it would be up to the city to um. You know, to, to demonstrate that there's the health, safety, welfare impact uh, to the project if, if there is a, you know. When, when one of these uh, uh, concessions is asked for or waivers. Okay, I know I've provided you with an immense amount of information and so uh. You know, would be happy to open it up uh, for any questions you have. Um, and I don't know if we've got anyone uh, from the public uh, present at this time.
I see Commissioner, or Commissioner Madden's hand was raised?
Yeah, um, couple of questions, uh, the height limit. Uh, a lot of buildings I've worked on, because they're near airports, they had height limits that superseded anything uh, that a particular city had. Is there anything like that, being, you know, so close to SFO, that would supersede any of these? Height exceeding uh, provisions that you talked about?
Uh, that's a very good question. No, there, you cannot exceed a, um, you know, an FAA established height, height limit.
Do you know how far that extends? Is it just one-on-one or is it further into the city?
Well, the, um, the city, there's a conical surface uh, that extends up from the runways. So there's, you know, so the height, the allowed height uh, varies depending, you know, how close you are to the airport. The other, the other um. Component is the noise contour. So uh, you know, portions of town are within the seventy to seventy-five. Decibel noise contour. So uh, based on the Airport Land Use Commission. Um, standards uh, and plan, uh, residential's an incompatible use. However. The city could still approve housing in those areas with sound, you know, mitigation and an override of the ALUC. So developers can still propose. Projects within those areas. However, there's those additional hurdles, but the, but the height limit. Um, cannot, that conical surface um, cannot be exceeded.
Is there a, a map maybe in the future, a future meeting you could present us showing where that?
Yes, at work, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we have, we have, yeah, we have the maps from the airport plan.
Okay. And then I, I had a, a question on slide seven and slide nine. I just want to make sure I'm understanding right.
Okay, let me uh. I guess I could go back to if I could find it. Okay. Okay. So.
Yeah, so um. The right-hand side, you've got the before SB nine and after SB nine and, and uh, obviously the buildings are different, but. The orange one on the right also shows a whole bunch of cars. Um, uh, where the other one doesn't. Uh, was there anything uh, particular why we're doing that other than? I, I know you mentioned the parking. Offsite parking or something is, so those restrictions have been lax, but is there anything in there about like? Only people who live in these lots should be able to park their cars? There like a sticker program or something? Cause I could see this getting really out of hand with uh. So many different people living in a fifty-foot wide lot. Uh, with, you know, two or three cars in each lot. Um, and. You know, could be a recipe for disaster. So, so I'm just wondering what is there? Am I, should I in, not be inferring something by the, 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 the number of cars shown on the right or?
So, so first I'll, I'll start with a disclaimer. These graphics are not, you know, ones that we produced. They're, they're ones that we. Uh, found from other sources. Uh, I think the, the point is that. You know, you could definitely see uh, additional uh. You know, you will, I'm sure you will see additional cars uh, associated with these. Uh, with these types of units. Uh, again, the state just restricts the fact that you can only. Require one covered or uncovered space per unit. Um, so if someone does choose to build four units. They could satisfy their parking with a two-car garage, two-car driveway or, or tan, you know, a tandem situation. Um, as well. Uh, so yes, you could see this. Uh, one, one thing to just mention is that the. Uh, you know, the city does have in its municipal code, a uh, a uh, I guess a. An allowance for residential parking permits, uh, but that has, that would have to be initiated, you know, by a neighborhood. Uh, to the planning commission, I'm sorry, to the city council. So there is an, it is a process to, you know, with the, with the majority of, of residents within a neighborhood to. Request uh, residential parking permits. However, um, the, the difficult. Part of that is you cannot use those permits um. Necessarily to restrict new residents from parking or having access to those permits. So. Um, how, you know, getting, you know, putting a neighborhood under parking permits. Uh, may not help solve the, the issue for existing residents. So um. You know, again, these are things that the states um. Uh, you know, doesn't allow jurisdictions to do.
Okay. Uh, one more on this slide. So there's a couple of lots on here where. The original house, instead of splitting into two smaller houses, is just getting bigger. Um, are there any, are there any uh, changes to? What, uh, you know, if you're just making a single-family home larger, like are the setbacks requirements all the same? I know we have a bunch of rules. Almost everything that comes to the planning commission is because someone's enlarging their house fifty percent more than what it is now. Um, seems like uh, that's pretty much the only type of project we'd be reviewing from now on. Uh, is that a fair statement?
Y- yes. So uh, you know, again, with the allowance for uh. Um, ex- ADUs and junior ADUs that um. Uh, you know, that, that basically only require building permits and, and they have to be allowed and permitted by the jurisdiction. Um, you know, we can't, you know, review them against the, the city's residential design guidelines and. And, and floor area requirements. And I know uh, the ARC just recently reviewed a home that had an internal. Uh, crawl space that was not used as habitable space. However, um. You know, in those types of situations, if the homeowner comes in with a permit for a, a junior eight, ADU. Uh, within the footprint of the building, you know, we're required to issue the permit. So. Uh, the, you know, so the floor area issue, um. Um, you know, again, some of these laws I think will um. Will kind of some, somewhat bypass some of the city's floor area restrictions or reviews related to additional floor area.
Right. I guess what I meant is that. All, if you just want to make your house bigger and not put an ADU or junior ADU. All the same rules that we've been following still apply, correct?
Yes, correct, correct.
So the potential for abuse is for someone to put a junior ADU or attached ADU. Get everything approved and then knock down some walls and make it just part of their house, correct? Unless someone wheels on them. Okay. All right. Uh, on slide nine. Go to that one. So this, these lots with ten-unit apartment uh, in red. Next to an existing house that is not altered in any way. This is really the law? I mean, this could ruin neighborhoods. I mean.
Yeah, so, um, so uh, as I mentioned, SB ten. Uh, is, is not uh, required by jurisdictions. It's only. It only provides a tool for uh, environmental reviews as uh. Uh, process of a zone change. So if, if, if jurisdictions. Desire to rezone residence, single-family residential neighborhoods close to transit. For uh, small apartment buildings. Um, they, the jurisdiction can. Uh, can basically. Set the rules for that type of rezoning. So it doesn't need to be for ten units if, if. Jur, if the jurisdiction wants to say allow for five units or six units. And within that area and rezone an area. That the process of, of rezoning is, would be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. So all, all it's doing is it's, it's, it's uh, removing a hurdle in the rezoning process for jurisdictions that want to do this. But it's, again, it's not required.
Okay, uh, that's good because I could see this crushing property values. Yeah, that's all I got. Thank you.
Arus, I see your hand is up here next in line.
Um. Yeah, I, I'm a little disappointed in the, the images that were sourced for these slides because they're from groups that were lobbying against the laws and they're actively misinformational. I mean, the SB ten one in particular, it being a completely opt-in process. Um, you know, if you don't want. The zone for ten-unit apartments in a neighborhood, then don't zone for that. It's, it's giving cities a, a tool that actually gives them more flexibility, not less. Um. On the height limits, uh, I know we have some. You know, five, six-story apartments down in Burlingame at a comparable distance from the airport. I mean. I don't know if you do know offhand, but I was curious to the answer to uh, Commissioner Madden's question, like. Are we anywhere close to hitting that surface? My understanding is we're probably not anywhere, but maybe in the northeast corner of the city.
Yeah, I, we'd have to, to check, to check that.
Okay, but yeah, my, my back of the envelope, my rough understanding is that. Even with, I mean, whatever bonuses, whatever maximum you could propose, like. That we're nowhere near hitting that surface and it's not going to be relevant. Um. On the SB thirty-five topic, I did just, I mean. If, if you look at what we proposed to do in the, the transit quarters plan, I think you would probably agree with, again, a little back of the envelope math. That if we had actually built out the transit quarter to the density we said we wanted to. Whatever that was, six, seven, eight years ago. Um, we would not be behind on our arena numbers and we would not be subject to SB thirty-five. Would you generally agree with that?
Uh, yes, cause the, yeah, the build-out, I believe is about eleven hundred units of the, from the um. From the transit corridors plan and our, and the, um, yeah, it would have, it would have essentially, you know. Um, uh, yeah, depending on the level of affordability.
It would have, yeah, I mean, again, fair, depending on including the DLI units and so on, but the, the raw number of units is more than that. And so I, I think, you know, it, I'm not super pleased to see us. Lose discretion, but there is a question of how we use our discretion. Um. I believe the density bonus law, I don't know if you know the history of this. I think my understanding is that it's. Based in a fairly successful San Diego program that was sort of piloted down in SoCal and they. It was adopted at the state level because San Diego was showing better progress on producing. Affordable units compared to uh, LA and San Francisco and Sacramento, that that's sort of the. I don't know if you're. Sort of familiar with any of that history or?
No, no, I apologize. I don't know the history, but.
But my understanding is there were, uh, there was evidence for this being an effective way to, to help. Produce the affordable units that I think everybody agrees we need. Um.
And I, and I, I, one thing I did want to include in my presentation, but then it is. Uh, since the city of San Bruno has a fifteen percent affordable requirement. Um, you know, built into the code of, you know, so developers have to provide those units. So I think that's also going to incentivize that density boat, naturally incentivize density bonuses. Uh, since they can basi- basically um, you know. Offset the cost or of, of those units, um, you know, that they're already required to provide, so.
I guess my last um, comment or, I don't know, something that you maybe want to clarify. My understanding of the Housing Accountability Act, from what I have read. Um, so I think the, probably the most notorious application of the Housing Accountability Act is the saga that was chronicled in the New York Times about the terraces of Lafayette. Uh, in which the city. And developer had agreed to downscale a project, the developer basically didn't want the headache and attempted to. Agree to downsize a project that had been proposed, that met all of the objective standards, that was within the zoning. And the Housing Accountability Act lawsuit was brought on behalf of the potential tenants of the project, not on behalf of the developer. That even though the developer wanted to make the concession. A private law firm can bring on behalf of the future tenants, a like, we would like this housing to exist because it will make our rent cheaper. And so it's important to remember that the, the Housing Accountability Act is not a tool of developers. It is a tool that the state of California. Has given to create a right of action on behalf of the people of California.
All right. Arus, did you have anything else or was that?
No, I just, I felt like it was important that we get some of these things clear.
Thank you. Okay, Mary, I see you have your hand up. Kelly had her hand up first, so if you wouldn't mind, Kelly, go ahead.
Yeah, um, mine is fairly simple. Um, Michael had mentioned the lifespan of the bill when talking about SB nine and I didn't realize that there were. Lifespans on bills. I just figured it was this magical thing that lasted forever. And I was wondering if, how that relates to SB nine and the other bills.
Yeah, and I, I apologize for the misunderstanding. So the bill itself doesn't, doesn't have, you know, it doesn't uh, sunset. So it's. You know, good, good, good until it's amended. But the, the research that was done by the Turner Center. Uh, was just projecting out to, they, what they did is they took, you know, kind of all of the entire state of California. They first looked at all the feasible lots that may be feasible to, to subdivide under SB nine. So that. Kind of brings the pool of, of lots down. Um, so for San Bruno, it went from say eighty-six hundred down to eighty-four hundred feasible. Type lots. And then they looked at market conditions, you know, uh, you know, housing prices, construction prices. And uh, you know, and then also kind of the. You know, how, how many people realistically would want to pursue something like this? So. The number, again, the number that was presented uh, for San Bruno was, was five hundred. So that. That number just simply means that, you know, at, at the current time. You know, maybe up to five hundred of the eighty-six hundred residential lots, you know, may. Pursue some type of uh, subdivision or addition of additional units. And, you know, we've already seen, um, you know, well over. You know, we've already seen, um, you know, well over a hundred ADUs, so again, what. And ADUs are probably much more attractive to the average homeowner. Uh, than the SB nine process, so again, that's just, um. You know, that was just information that was produced by the, the Turner Center.
Great, thank you.
Was that it, Kelly?
Yep, that's it, thank you.
Mary, please, if you would.
Yeah, so, you know, it's so interesting to listen to all of this because. Now, uh, as a commissioner for a long time, there's a way, a culture and a training and knowledge we received along the way and. Planning Commission institute, institutes and, um, going to them and how lay of land and. Progression, how all, all the planning goes with it, and so I can't help but think about this, it's just a whole new way of thinking. And what communities will look like, and so trying to stay on a positive side to think about, okay. How can we plan accordingly and not just look at this project by project, but looking, you know, looking at this from a bigger picture. And, and, and it really, I mean, there's a huge change here and also our demographics. Uh, there was a time, I don't know specifically right now, but it was a time that, uh, it was. An older population or, you know, a time that was very family oriented, there's just different trends that have happened over a lifetime. And so looking at this, what does this do? Does this bring in younger people? Does this bring more aging population? Uh, what's going to take place, and so I'd like to think about this, to saying, okay, it's a law, we don't have a choice. So being able to think about it rather than from a negative point of view and thinking, okay, not in my backyard. And I just counted, cause I own, uh, four commercial piece of property on Santa Inez. And, a- and my, my school building, it's a private school, has been there for seventy years, oh, actually. School's been there some years, but nineteen sixty-two, and so, uh, I, I know that community, I was there forty-five years. Living it every day, and there are nine streets, I counted them, nine streets that have such a huge mixture. Of apartment buildings, a variety of unique ways of, of living in that space and we, you know, you're coming to it. But it just, it came about along the way, and I, I hope that as this progresses, that we're not going to be doing this on a. On a application by application, but taking a look at, how do we want to develop this? And we have had these long conversations, I mean, I've been on the commission thirty-one years, and. Long conversations about San Mateo Avenue, Shirets and different things being done, and yet we're not moving forward in a way. You know, the discussions have tried, tried to think about, uh, different communities within our city, so. You know, i- it's, 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 you know, it's, um, it's a huge deal, it's a huge deal to think about this. And, and, um, and we don't have a choice, but we do have a choice. Of how we want to give a big, a bigger picture thought, study sessions, figuring things out. And maybe that isn't a choice, I really don't know that, uh, you know, this is new to us, but I'd like to think about as they come up. You know, when I look at that slide seven and slide nine, I mean, they look, I can remember on Sneed Lane when it used to be nursery. Uh, a row of nursery, uh, nursery, uh, places and it was all just buildings where there was a lot of greenery and. Landscaping, it was all just nurseries, and then there was the, um. Uh, the Orchid Place on, on Al Camino, I can't think of the name right now, but. And then we've got the whole, whole development there and that was done really well for that, a number of acres, and so just thinking about this because. We're going to have riled up people, we're going to have people coming to meetings. We're, as commissioners, we're going to be hearing a lot about not in my backyard kind of thing. And since we don't have a choice, how can we make it so it is, we're walking forward, moving forward as a community. To make these things happen, you know, I, I, one of the slides talked about affordability, it talked about just different ways of putting things together. But when I see those slides seven and nine, I mean, I grew up in the ma- in the mission, my husband grew up in, in. Hundreds points project area, and, uh, we were across different projects, we saw what happens when there's massive kinds of things. Now, it's a different era, a different timing, and I'm not at all discriminating, but I'm pointing out the fact, masses of a people create a different energy. And so, to be sure that we have community parks, different things taking place, so it's bringing a community together. Uh, versus just plopping, you know, the, to me, this looked like barracks. You know, it looked like, and I know you got these slides, they're not the ti- they're not what's planned, but they, a- and also the other thing that I saw. Was, uh, we have been trained to look at much more greenery, much more, you know, percentage of, of, uh. You know, permeable spa- and all kinds of things to make an environment look much more curb appeal, attractive, sustainable. Uh, all those types of things, and the other slide showed a tremendous amount of reduction. And, 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 and that greenery, that landscaping, so I, I just think that if we start taking these projects one by one. We're going to end up with a bunch of chopped up kinds of stuff, and so. I'd like us to be sure that it's a community, the city of San Bruno community, the city with a heart, that we're really thinking about this. From a bigger picture point of view, the thought of, of not doing it with some. You know, and our, and our, you know, commission changes and takes place, but I don't think anyone would be a guest saying, let's look at this. As a livable place together, and, um, uh, it's huge, I think this is a huge. Change in a way of living in our community, and we are changing, life is different than it was, you know, I. I'm old enough to be able to speak to those kinds of things, and I can also see that it could be a great, a great opportunity. To create, uh, wonderful spaces for children, you, when you start having massive places like this. You start having what feels like unsafe conditions, and then you're starting to hibernate in houses, children are unable to play outside. You start to change your, your, your city, your communities, so I think that. From a conscious, you know, being conscious in this process, I can't be unconscionable in doing, and, and not doing something without giving it. Uh, some big picture planning, so anyway, that's what I have to say, and I, uh, I love change. But I love change with good thought, good planning, and so, um, some things I never want to change, but I think that. Change is inevitable, and we can't ever stop building and changing, uh, communities will do that, we can't, we will stagnate. And we will become, uh, a town of no growth and, eh, you know, I know what happens to towns of, of zero. Opportunity or people who just really look at, no, just flat, no. I'm, I'm excited to think about our city, it, uh, it's exciting to think about children and families, cause that's really, really what it's about. Children and families become senior citizens at one point, and, uh, anyway, that's what I have to say, thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mary. Okay, um, was there anyone else who had something to say before I speak? Anyone? Okay, so I have two items, Michael, the first one is kind of a stupid question, but I, and I know I've asked it before, but. Are ADUs counted in arena numbers?
Yes, you can count them, uh, in, in the arena, uh, so, um, I. You know, as you know, San Bruno has a huge arena number, um, of sixty-one hundred fifty-five, I believe is the number. That we need to show locations for in the next, next housing element cycle. We're allowed to, uh, cap use, uh, an average, um, of the past several years, so. Um, you know, so right now, that average is looking like about forty-three or forty, um, units. Then projected over an eight-year period, so, you know, possibly three hundred. Um, we can, you know, count those, but, you know, and it, we're good, we'll be, um, you know, next year. Uh, you know, after the first of the year, it's the year of the housing element, so you'll be getting, uh. You know, we'll be having, uh, study sessions and other, uh, types of, uh, meetings. Surrounding the housing element and its preparation and the housing sites. Um, and, uh, I mean, that, I think we may try to have, I think. We're going to s- probably start with the city council at the end of January with a, with a, uh, a study session. To kind of initiate the, um, the housing element process, uh, and the housing element sites. Uh, so, sorry, I'm, 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 I'm rambling as an answer to your question, so the answer is yes.
So the next question I have is, we're doing a lot of legislation here and pushing for development. What can we do to encourage people to build these things? I mean, we can legislate ten thousand or a hundred thousand units, but if no one's inspired to build these things. If it's not economically sensible for someone to build it, they're not going to build it, so what can we do to make it easier for people or, or. Incentivize for people to build these things?
Well, I, I think, um, we're, the city's in the midst of a, is going to be in the midst of a, of a very. Large building boom, even, I've only been here a few weeks and the number of calls that I'm getting, um, you know, for housing sites and. Uh, development of sites within the Transit Corridors Plan, uh, you know, things, things are, are starting to, to happen. And I, um, you know, I would say that you, the community has done, I think. The, the best it can with, with, and I think it's a very good, uh, really, all that really is needed is the. Transit corridor plan, because, you know, developers look for, look for plans like this that. That lay out the locations for development, uh, you know, for them, uh, so. Um, you know, a lot of the hu- the new housing laws, uh, you know, require that the, the property be zoned for. You know, have, have the ability to be zoned for, or have the ability to be built for residential or mixed use. At densities that, you know, make sense for the developers, so I think, again, I think you're going to be seeing. Um, oh, oh, you've opened the door through the Transit Corridor Plan.
Okay, thank you, and then the last part of my questions this evening is, thinking about this from the staff's point of view. This is coming, what, January twenty-two? I believe, so, I'm imagining myself standing behind the planning counter. Having to answer questions from citizens about all of this, and I'm just wondering if we can take maybe some of tonight's program. Uh, that's a slideshow, or put together a webpage of some sort, so that we make it easier for staff, for them to, um. Be able to refer folks to, uh, the changes, if that makes sense. You know, I, I'm just thinking about trying to make things easier for staff, I mean, there's probably going to be more than one or two people. Who come to the counter and want to know why there's something happening next door, and if you had some. You had something already created that you could just refer them to, it might save staff a lot of time.
No, that's a good point.
Cool, I have nothing else, does anyone else have anything before we move on?
Through the chair?
Please, Kelly.
Um, kind of in the spirit of what you were just talking about, I think, um, it would be great to also. Maybe get ahead and, and help to educate people in our community about what these changes could potentially mean to us, and so when things. When developments do start trickling in, um, that look different than people may expect, is how we can kind of educate them on. On why and how and what it means to them, um, I know that, um, the city managers, um. What are these things called? Sorry, my vocabulary is gone now, I used a little words already, um, his newsletters. His newsletters, um, tend to cover some pertinent things, that might be a nice way, um, something of that, of that nature to. To reach folks about these kinds of changes, or maybe, actually, maybe the newspapers will do it, but, alright. Just in that same spirit, but I throw that out there.
Thank you.
Through the chair?
Mary.
Since, since, uh, this is going, you know, starting in January. We know what the energy was when the Mills Park project was in place, and there were so, so many people. Uh, that had said they hadn't even heard about it, and we had had many community meetings, we're going to have that happen. But because if it is going to go into implement in January, then it's a very short timeframe, so. Uh, I think part of it is that talking points for us would be really useful, uh, if there's any opportunity to have. Ways that we could be, um, uh, speak from the point of things that are not, that are beyond our control. Since it is a, is it is a, it is a law, so that way we're at least on the same page about being able to get the message out there. We have our own opinions and our own feelings on that, but I, I think as, I think that it's our, it's my responsibility as a commissioner. To try to convey as much information from a point of not creating energy that's going to stir up. But to educate, and, and then listen to people's feelings, listen to what's taking place and, and, and try to walk in that direction. Thank you.
Got it, Michael, maybe we could look at making that sort of information available to all the commissioners? So that, like Mary says, we too, when people approach us and talk to us, we have a, a, a resource to direct them to perhaps.
Yeah, I think we could, uh, you know, just repackage, and I, you know, I apologize, we weren't able to give you a staff report. Uh, for the, for this information, we did one for the, the city council, but that only got approved late Friday afternoon. By the city manager, so we weren't able to tell us to get it to you, but what we, we could do is just repackage. Um, a summary of, you know, of these laws, uh, for you. Uh, you know, just so you know that they, uh, how they apply, um, you know, and I, I did want to mention too that we did. Uh, if you had, if you did either participate in the meeting, um, or I believe it may have been on the. In the city manager's newsletter, the city has received, we have received our first SB thirty-five application. Uh, for a hundred thirty-six unit project at seven thirty-two through seven forty, Al Camino, it's the vacant lot. Uh, to the south of the former Toyota building. Um, so that, you know, is a, is a, is a, is a project that, you know, staff will be processing, and again, it's. It's not subject to discretionary approval, so, uh, we're currently reviewing that internally. Um, but there, there are some, uh, images on the website, uh, for that, for that project.
Thank you, Commissioner Harmon, I'm looking at the expression on your face, did you have something?
Yeah, through the chair, I, I did, I mean, since we were getting into that SB thirty-five project, not that. Our opinion is going to matter in the end, because of how it's being processed, but, um. You know, the, the Mills Park project was shortly before my time on the commission. And I, I really believe that that was a, you know, as acrimonious as it was, it's a better project for. The input of the public and the planning commission, that I, I think, you know, some of the things like the way it stepped down. To protect light access on the backside towards the neighborhood, you know, there's like a lot of features of it that are good. And if you compare what was the, the SB thirty-five project that was sort of held as a threat. Um, I mean, my impression from talking to people is it was purely a threat. And they didn't actually want to spend the money to fully do all the structural engineering to produce it, but that they wanted to hold it over the city to, to get their project finished. But because of how that saga went, we're now probably going to see more SB thirty-five projects, and unless we can. Get our act together to produce a housing element next year and actually start building things and meet arena numbers, that's, that's what we're going to get. We're going to have featureless boxes instead of, you know, attractive step-down, you know, carved-in public parks. Um, as far as like, I, it's really important that we, uh, hit our numbers, basically. Um, cause that, that's how we get to keep the discretion and how we get better projects where we have the input.
Thank you for your insight, Commissioner, uh, Kelly?
Um, yes, through the chair, um. All right, so you had just mentioned that, uh, by producing our numbers, that will help us, help to keep us out of the SB thirty-five. Types of things, I'm sorry, can you elaborate on that? Is this SB thirty-five, is that when, when you're behind on your numbers, that kicks in?
Yeah, and so, um, yeah, so the way, the way this will probably play out is that. That, you know, um, we're, we are in the, you know, the, basically the last year of our current housing element. With, with the lower, lower arena number, so when our, the new housing element with this, the six thousand units. Uh, sixty-one hundred units goes into effect in, in, um. You know, in twenty twenty-two, we're going to have, uh, you know. HCD, um, Housing and Community Development is going to be evaluating our progress towards meeting that number at, at some intervals along the eight year cycle of, of that next housing element. So it may not be until we're four years into that, uh, cycle to see if we've produced, say, you know, over three thousand of those units before, um, you know, we may, that we may not then be, uh, you know, um, you know, subject to SB thirty five. So, um, you know, so that's, you know, that, you know, that's how, that's how it may play out. So it may be a very long time, uh, before, you know, before there's, there's, and by then, there may be, you know, with the number of housing law changes that are occurring every year, uh, you know, it may be a whole different kind of environment at that point. So it's hard, it's hard to, it's hard to say.
Okay, so we're in SB thirty five territory now and it may be
Correct.
at least midway through the next housing elements eight year cycle, that we may actually see relief from that.
Yeah, so I would say at least the next five years will be accept, you know, will be needing to accept these projects.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anyone else before we move on? Commissioner Madden?
Yeah, um, like Commissioner Harmon, uh, the Mills Park project was before my time on this commission. Uh, but, uh, you know, what's stopping that developer from walking away? I don't want to do this anymore. Forming a new LLC, coming back and doing the massive original design. Is there anything stopping them from doing that?
I, you know, I don't know. I know that's a complicated project before my time as well, so, uh, I, you know, I don't have a, have a good answer on that one.
Okay.
Through the chair.
This, this thing could, you know, I hear what everybody's saying, but I think there's a lot of potential for, um, you know, like just in my neighborhood in Rollingwood, if people start splitting their lots up, I could see a lot of people just doing that, selling and leaving. And, uh, because it's just not the same neighborhood and, you know, it's not something we can really, uh, correct, it seems, but I don't think it's going to make any people less angry just because we have some YouTube video, oh, it's out of our control, or here, go look at this on the website, there's nothing we can do. I think, uh, it's, it's just, uh, kind of a blanket plan that, um, is a little too, uh, too general for my liking anyway. But it sounds like we're stuck with it and I could see a lot of abuse.
Thank you, Commissioner Madden. Anybody else? Mary?
Yeah, um, you know, a number of years ago, uh, on San Benito, right behind my school, there are houses that had split. There were split houses, split owners of those houses. And for the longest time, um, the developer was Dennis Jordan and he, he developed the two houses and he, and he, um, um, had hoped that would just, one family would move into them, couldn't sell them, couldn't sell them, so he split them. And there's a couple of them that are split that way. And it's just interesting to watch how they've worked it out. And going to Australia, my children live there, and going to Australia, there's a huge amount of that going down a small little pathway and there's houses there in that area. If it's built under those conditions, um, for that purpose, it can really work. But if it's, if it's just someone decides just to maximize opportunity, then it creates, it creates a different environment. And that's what I was trying to say earlier, I wasn't trying to, uh, when I was saying that the four lots I own in San Bruno, there's such a huge mix of development there, apartment buildings, huge houses, lots, lots of apartments and lots of single dwelling mixed right in there. And so whether it's it's best use, I don't know, but I think this is a time that this is important, just as Commissioner Madden was saying, it will, you know, some of these home places have larger lots and to start breaking them up into two, it starts to change things. So, um, I look forward to thinking about this in a bigger, in a bigger way. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, so I'm going to have one more comment to my fellow commissioners. You know, I just want to say thank you for your efforts up to this point and I hope all of you continue to remain energized and with the commission because I don't, I don't even know what I want to say, but it's like, I hope that we continue to do the kind of work that we've done up to now. And I, I don't want to see anyone get disheartened and walk away from the commission because we're all talented people and we all bring a lot to the table. And, uh, I appreciate, I appreciate everybody, even though I see changes coming with this new law. So thank you all for being here and being part of this. Does anyone else got anything before we go? Okay, so we'll move on to item six, items from staff. And that would be the November eighteenth ARC Architectural Review Special Meeting. Any volunteers?
Okay, yeah. Uh, Commissioner Johnson's volunteering for that.
I'll do it.
And Chair Pasati, okay? And someone else, another?
Was it November eleventh or eighteen?
Eighteen, November eighteen. Yeah, it's a special meeting.
Right.
Do you know the topic?
Uh, yes, there's a, um, we'll be reviewing a, uh, a small property on El Camino Real.
I'm available, you know, if we need people.
And I did check, yeah, I did check the maps and no one has, um, a, a conflict. So, uh, yeah, so we've got, uh, we've got the chair, vice chair and Commissioner Johnson, uh, for that meeting. So, uh, so now we would need, uh, we, we, I'm not sure, I imagine we will have items for the December, uh, ARC meeting. So, uh, if I can get three, three volunteers for that, okay? Same two.
What's the date for that meeting? It's, um,
December sixteenth.
Yes, December sixteenth.
Uh, December sixteen.
You can volunteer for that.
Okay, great, thank you.
You remind me, our, our ARC is our six P M. rather than seven P M.
Correct.
Okay, that, that's out of the way. And item seven, public comments for items not on the agenda. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address the commission at this time? Either raise your hand with Zoom or star nine on the phone, please. We'll give you a minute or two to get organized. Michael, are you seeing anyone on your side there?
No, no.
Okay. Uh, then we'll move on to item eight, items from members and subcommittee reports. Anyone have anything for us this evening? No? All right, with that, we'll move to item nine, which is adjournment, and we will be adjourned until November sixteenth, twenty twenty one at seven P M. Thank you, everyone, for your hard work this evening. Thanks to see you all.
Thank you all.
Good night.
All right, take it.